Start the meeting.
Okay, thank you. The regular meeting for Wednesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five for the Scataway Planning Board will now come to order. Mr. Barlow, are we in compliance for this meeting this evening?
Uh, yes, Reverend Kenny. Um, in keeping with the guidelines promulgated by the Department of Community Affairs, the planning board has best tried its best to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act and the guidelines issued with regards to saying. Uh, the Zoom link for this matter has been part of the agenda and is been put forth if any members of the public wish to comment. They just need to raise their hand at the appropriate portion. Thank you, Reverend Kenny.
Barlow, uh, notice of this meeting was published in the Courier-News. Notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available to the township clerk. Clerk notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star Ledger. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Waller?
Present.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Here.
Ms. Corcoran? The ones here. Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Here.
And Mr. Etcheverria?
Here.
Okay, I remember six. We all, uh, recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
Of America.
Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, may we have the swearing in of a professional?
Okay, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about the give be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, Attorney Barlow, is there any changes in the agenda tonight?
Tom, you're muted.
You didn't get to hear me say, however, Kenny, there's. My understanding is there's no changes to the agenda.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone, uh, the audit to pay the bills?
Um, Chairman, I'd like to make a, uh, motion to pay the bills.
Do I get a second?
Second, Councilwoman Cahill.
Thank you.
Local. Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Mr. Etcheverria?
Yes.
Uh, number eight?
Okay, um, I'd like to memorialize the action taken on April ninth, twenty twenty-five. Application twenty-five PB zero one Piscataway Centennial Developers LLC Palmyra Air Final Site Plan.
Do I get a second?
Mr. Atkins, second.
Okay.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Mr. Etcheverria?
Yes.
Uh, number nine, and I get a motion, adoption of the minutes from, uh, April ninth, twenty twenty-five, uh, minutes?
Uh, Chairman, I'd like to memorialize the minutes from the regular meeting of April ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Can I get a second?
Mr. Atkins, a second.
Yeah. Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Mr. Etcheverria?
Yes.
Okay.
Number ten. Redevelopment plan for, for block fifty-seven oh one, lot eleven, shown on the tax map, fifty-seven of the Scataway tax map, uh, commonly known as seventeen hundred Wash- South Washington Avenue. Uh, Mr. James Clarkin.
Yes, good evening, members of the board. I'll be presenting this redevelopment plan tonight. So this is seventeen hundred South Washington Avenue, block fifty-seven oh one, lot eleven. Um, so back in April twenty fourteen by resolution twenty-four one fifty-nine, both lot eleven and twelve of block five seven oh one was designated as in need of redevelopment. And so, uh, we decided to do two separate redevelopment plans. So this one is specific to lot eleven. Uh, as a refresher, um, fifty-seven oh one lot eleven is about forty-two acres in size. Uh, it has frontage on both, uh, Suddy Avenue and South Washington. So it's quite a large piece of land. Uh, and it has never been developed and is currently vacant as of now. Um, as you're driving down South Washington Avenue, the best landmark, I guess you could say, are the huge electric utility overhead lines that you see going through the, uh, the property. But, um, this redevelopment plan proposes senior citizen housing as the sole permitted principal use. And this is because your master plan, uh, specifically called out this lot for senior citizen housing. So basically, this redevelopment plan was written to effectuate that use that you are looking to, um, establish at block fifty-seven oh one, lot eleven. Um, and especially because there's so much demand for that use. That is what we're looking to move forward with. So as you can see, your current zoning ordinance under S C H zone is senior citizen housing. And so this plan will also have the same. So this is just what your current, uh, zoning code calls for. Um, but it will be a little bit different for the redevelopment plan, and I'll get into that a little bit because there's going to be two sites. But as I said, the plan vision is to effectuate what your master plan calls for. Um, I will say that, um, for the Fair Housing Act, we're looking to do thirty-nine affordable housing units as part of this redevelopment plan so that complies with your fair share obligations. Uh, so your goals are to create land use requirements specific to the redevelopment area that effectuate senior citizen housing. Uh, we want to encourage redevelopment and increase tax ratables, um, develop financial and regulatory regulatory incentives, including tax abatement, um, and provide for senior citizen housing that, um, provides several housing products, including standalone, single-family homes and rental units and as well as affordable units. So if you go to page four on the redevelopment plan in front of you, this is the land use plan that we are proposing. So as I said, there's two different sets of standards. So we're going to have a site A, and that will be specifically applicable to senior restricted, single-family residential use. And then there will be site B, which will be senior restricted multifamily use. Um, site A will be accessed off of Suddy Avenue, and site B will be accessed off of South Washington Avenue. And as I said, blocks fifty-seven oh one, lot twelve is a part of the original in need of redevelopment study we put together for you. Um, but it will be addressed in a separate plan. So under principal permitted uses, as I said, site A, site B, um, these are your permitted accessory uses, which are pretty standard. So you have your off-street parking, your clubhouses, pools, uh, walkways, game and sport areas, uh, electric vehicle chargers, and then prohibited uses is basically anything that's not in here or that is hazardous or dangerous. So this bulk requirements table lays out the requirements for site A and site B. So these are pretty typical for single-family, um, within the area of Piscataway that we're talking about off of Suddy Avenue. So minimum lot areas, five thousand square feet, uh, fifty across a hundred deep, um, with typical setbacks. Um, and then we have site B, which is much larger. So I would say this is going to encompass around sixteen acres, uh, as conceptualized. Um, so the minimum lot, so that meets the minimum lot area of thirty. Uh, but definitely larger setbacks so that there's more space off of South Washington Avenue. Um, and further, the max height is only fifty feet for principal structures. So the maximum net density that we're looking for site A is four point three units per acre. That's for the single-family residential and then twelve units per acre for site B, which is the multifamily residential. Uh, these are just your accessory structure bulk standards at the bottom of page five. Um, I think the, the most important one is making sure that the clubhouse is no larger than thirty-five feet in height. Um, so C and D is like pretty typical language. Um, we're saying that, uh, it's an appropriate land use and the density is appropriate. Um, and then we get into traffic. So if they bring any potential redeveloper that brings a site plan to your board, um, they will have to do a traffic impact analysis. Um, as always, we require the five-foot wide pedestrian sidewalks around the site. And I think we're even asking for a, uh, pedestrian pathway for the multifamily site. Um, I do want to note that the redevelopers shall dedicate sufficient land to achieve your master plan's fifty-two foot half width of South Washington Avenue. Um, we're calling for ingress and egress, egress, excuse me, um, from South Washington to have, uh, no left in and no left out. However, this is a county road, so they may reach out to the county for, um, excuse me, a left in, left out. And if that becomes the case, then that will be permitted. Parking and loading, uh, we're looking for two spaces per driveway for the single family is pretty typical. And then multifamily dwellings, one point five spaces per dwelling, which I think should be more than enough, especially for senior citizen housing. Um, and then we're looking for at least twenty-two spaces electrified for E Vs at the time of occupancy. And then following one year from that, when you hit the ninetieth certificate of occupancy for the multifamily site, another twenty-two. And that should, um, comply with the state requirements requiring, uh, with respect to E Vs. For utilities, pretty standard, uh, Mr. Mayor, I will note that I did, uh, not request, require underground installation of all utilities to the maximum extent possible, but also fiber optic conduit must be installed along all property frontages and shall be installed underground. So I can make that change to say that Piscataway must have access to that conduit.
Yeah, and if I may, uh, um, uh, James, um, Clarkin, um, can we make sure that we have access to the back of the property at best we can? So if we ever had to run fiber optic from the ecological park across the street, we'll be able to connect up over to the municipal complex a lot easier instead of going all the way down Centennial and then around.
Okay, yes, I can add those two things. Uh, site, uh, stormwater, yeah, that stormwater improvements, um, will be required as usual. Solid waste is pretty typical. So for signage, we're looking for one freestanding monument sign um, for the residential projects. Uh, sorry, on lot eleven, so the, for the South Washington entrance. Um, so that one will be, you know, more than six feet in height and thirty-two square feet in size. And then you'll have your typical directional signs within the parking lot and for the ingress and egress. Uh, lighting, we're just saying the high mass light pulse can't be any higher than twenty-five feet. They have to be L E D, uh, and not cause any glare. Landscaping, deciduous shade trees. We're looking for a ratio of one tree per thousand square feet of parking space. Um, and we're looking to make sure that anything planted consists of no less than seventy percent native species. And if anything dies, they have to replace it within two years. Okay, so page nine starts additional design standards. I do want to touch on a couple of important ones. Fences for the multifamily site will be, um, either located in the rear or the side and be no more than six feet. But for site A, they have to comply with your zoning ordinance with respect to fences. Um, color and design of the principal structures shall be acceptable to your planning staff if they ever come before your board. Um, as I mentioned, we want to pave an illuminated walking path five feet in width to be constructed around the perimeter of the multifamily structures. Uh, and that would be in addition to the sidewalks along South Washington Avenue. Now, number or letters J, K, and L, I'm not going to read all this because it's a little technical. But basically what we're looking for is, it's called a surface access and temporary construction easement. And what this is really looking to do is make sure that the redevelopers of lot eleven and lot twelve are sharing the access in terms of construction, maintenance, snow plowing, anything that might be required to maintain it. Um, to make sure the residents of both lots have access throughout the entirety of the development, but to make sure that they're taking care of it too. So that's really what is being accomplished with, with letter J. And then K is a similar story. I mentioned that one freestanding sign at the entrance to South Washington Avenue. That sign will also be shared. So that will be the sign easement that both redevelopers want to, um, work together on in terms of constructing, maintaining, and repairing. And then finally, L is to make sure that access is available to the clubhouse, the outdoor swimming pool to all residents of lot twelve and lot eleven. Environmental assessment, there are existing wetlands on the property. Uh, the redevelopers responsible for meeting N J D P requirements regarding that. Uh, the concepts I've seen seem to avoid the re, uh, the wetlands. Um, plan consistency review, as I mentioned, this is directly matching what your master plan is looking for. There's no nearby municipalities that we have to worry about. It meets the state plan. And I think that's really everything I wanted to touch on. There's, as I mentioned, I'll go to the last couple bullets on page fourteen. There, we are requiring thirty-nine affordable units. Um, nothing needs to be acquired and fee simple, so we don't have to really relocate any residents or businesses. Um, this is a non-condemnation redevelopment plan. And the redevelopment plan shall be binding upon the correct owner of block fifty-seven oh one, lot eleven. Its heirs, successor, successors, and assigns. Um, and once again, the access easement and sign easement, um, shall be for the benefit of the current owner of block fifty-seven oh one, lot twelve, its heirs, successors, and assigns. And just for a quick visual, so site B, South Washington Avenue will be over here, and then site A is on, over here where Suddy Avenue is. So I can take any questions?
Uh, Chair, if I, if Chairman, if I may, um, um, Mr. Clarkin, just a couple of things. So what is, uh, what's the reasoning behind the differences in the, the fence, um, you know, situation here between the two lots for this redevelopment plan? Why is one saying it's following the township ordinances, but the other not? And talking about a six-foot fence in the backyard or side yard, I think you had up there. I'm not sure.
I think we just wanted to make sure because your zoning ordinance code, um, is specific to single-family and we wanted to be consistent with that so that fencing in site A matches what's currently out there now. Um, and site B, I think we just didn't want any fencing in the front yard, like along South Washington.
Okay, so essentially, it's not that site A are we talking about now? Um, that, that they don't have to abide by ordinance is that the only, you're designating the only places where a fence can be.
For site B, yeah, for the multifamily.
For B.
Yeah.
And then i- it, the, the size of the lots is, um, the, the differences in the reasoning behind it because of the sign, uh, the size of one lot versus the other in its capacity or?
Yeah, exactly. So the multifamily site encompasses a lot more land area, so they needed a bigger minimum lot area requirement where a site A is more in line with what you see in that.
Oh, single family.
For the single family, exactly.
So the differences are between multifamily and single family?
Yes, I think that would be the best way to describe.
Right. And then the idea is that even though they're two potentially separate owners or developers, they would have one clubhouse, one pool is?
Yeah, so, uh, I think that site A does not have, from the concept plans I've seen, does not have direct access to that pool. They may, um, what I was talking about is lot twelve. Here, let me bring it up again. It might be easier to visualize. Oops. So lot twelve is right here. So if the clubhouse would be over here. So we want to make sure that lot twelve residents can access the amenities built here. Um,
If it's two different developers, how, how is that working?
Right, so this plan is just for what is outlined in blue, lot eleven. So that's why I went through all of that, uh, like the surfit, surface access and temporary construction easement. Those easements will regulate for almost the lack of a better word, that they maintain the egress because lot twelve will be dependent on that egress from South Washington.
Right.
But we also want, this redeveloper may want his residents to have access to the amenities that are on lot eleven. Either the way, better way to put it is it has to go on one lot or the other. So if, if there are two redevelopers as we envision, one for lot eleven, one lot twelve, the clubhouse has to go somewhere. So someone's going to have to allow access. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I, I, yeah, I guess.
I can say it again.
No, I know. I, I mean, I'm just trying to think like access to a pool and things of that nature and any extra fees that people might be paying. I, I guess I just don't understand if it's located on the property that's being developed by one owner, how residents of a separate property, if a separate owner has it, gets access to that without some sort of additional fees. I, you know, I just, or cost added to their rent or mortgage. You know what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying.
I just don't understand how that works. Somebody could.
Yeah.
That's for the two developers and their attorneys to work out.
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah, but the redevelopment, um, plan requires them to do it. So
Okay.
They're, they're forced to because I, I think part of the reason is um, the way that lot twelve is shaped, trying to have its own entrance off of South Washington and then putting, i- if you think about it, i- if both of them had their own clubhouses and pools and parking lots, you, you could theoretically have two that you could throw a ball and hit off of each other. And that probably doesn't make the most sense from a development plan. So.
You're still gonna have to cross the street, though, to go to the pool or the clubhouse?
Yeah, you'll have to get, you know, you're, you, most of these developments, you know, you're not going to be able to just walk to the pool. You're gonna, might have to go to your car, and that's why there's, um, um, walkable paths plus parking. Um, and look, I'm sure they'll share the cost. They'll work.
Yeah, exactly. The easement says they share the cost. The two redevelopers share the cost, so they may build that into their rents.
And what about then?
They have to share the parking spaces for.
Right. And then any potential developer who then comes before us with their site plan, you know, the first pass, um, being that these folks in the other lot have to cross a street, you know, a public street where I know, Mr. Baller, you're saying, oh, a lot of them, they may have to drive to, but they're still within their development. These folks in the other area would have to cross the street. So, um, I guess my question is, well, I have a couple of questions is, is this board going to make sure that that street has potentially maybe some extra walk paths? Some security, you know, I, I don't know. I'm just.
Those are, those are great ideas, and that will be worked into, I'm sure, by the municipal staff reports when there's an actual plan to make sure that all that's effectuated. Because those are great questions. They're just not ones that can really be answered right now. But you're right, this.
Well, I mean, we're voting on this rede- redevelopment plan as it stands. So what we are saying is that seniors across the street, if they want to go to a plaza, are crossing a public street with their vehicle or their bodies. And so as we vote on this and think about this, it's something that we also have to take into consideration whenever or whoever the developer is who comes in is there's got to be safety precautions added to that township street.
Well, uh, uh, I would think it's an interior street within the confines of the development. For instance, say all the lots were here.
Wait, wait, that street doesn't, isn't going to be accessible to everybody because I think it connects to another street. Am I wrong?
It may be private. If you're going from one lot to the other, very well may be private.
Could you bring up the map again, uh, Mr. Clarkin?
Yeah.
Okay, because that was, I thought the street connected.
There, gab, those lots are adjacent to one another. Right now, there's like no.
Okay, but if you look, if you look at the South Washington entrance.
There's no entrance.
There isn't at this time.
That's just a blue lot line.
Oh, that's a blue lot.
Yeah, that's not a road. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I, I did that highlight so you knew.
You're gonna see eleven and twelve. There's no access between the two of them right now. But when these come in for site plan, that's when that's going to come into play and it's going to be.
All right. So they're gonna share an entrance with the signage.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
So it's gonna, you're gonna come, come in one entrance and maybe go to the right for Acme.
Yeah.
Your housing and go to the left for Beta.
Yeah.
But they're gonna have a, you know, common amenities, I guess.
Got you. But now that is a sh- is that, okay, that is a delineation. Where's the access from Suddy Street, though?
Here, let me, hold on, let me zoom in.
Where's the spot?
Hold on. So this is Carol Lane, I think.
Oh, I see it. Okay.
And it's not, yeah, they'll, they'll have to, uh, develop the rest of it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me.
Okay, is there any more questions for Mr. Clarkin? Okay, what do we do with this, uh, board members? Uh, what do you want to do? Do you want to go forward with this plan? Or is there any, any revisions that we need to add to it before we, we, uh, go forward?
I think the plan encompasses those additional, uh, comments that the mayor indicated um, with regards to the, uh, the four-inch, um, conduit and access for the municipality in the rear. Um, Reverend Kenny, so that would be the, the, the redevelopment plan as indicated by Mr. Clarkin with those additions. Um, and if it's the board's pleasure, would be recommending to the council the adoption of the redevelopment plan.
Okay, who wants to?
Well, we do need to open it.
Need to open to the public though first, Reverend Kenny.
All right, open, uh, open to the public. Anybody in the public?
They have any questions or comments on the redevelopment plan? No one, Chairman?
Okay. What do I hear from the board? Uh, what do you want to do? You want to refer this or go forward with this plan?
Call for a vote.
Call for a vote. All those in favor?
No.
We need a motion first.
You want to make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Councilwoman Cahill. I'll make a motion that we refer this redevelopment plan to, uh, the council, uh, Township Council for.
For approval.
Cheryl Saunders, second.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I was asking. For vote. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Etcheverria?
Yes.
And Chairman Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny, I believe Ms. Saunders has a resolution memorializing the same for referral.
Okay, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, um, memorialize a resolution recommend- recommending adoption of the redevelopment plan for seventeen hundred South Washington Avenue.
I hear a second.
Second, Councilwoman Cahill?
Yeah.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Mr. Etcheverria?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you, board members. Uh, Mr. Clarkin, I would like to thank you for this extensive report because of the- because of the the fact that it was two developers developing this uh plan. And I I see this uh parcel of land being put to good use for Piscataway residents, seniors, and for uh housing project. And thank you very much for this extensive report.
You are very welcome. Thank you.
Okay, uh do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, board members.
Good night.
Reverend Kenny, have a good night, everyone.